So there's one, only one application in front of the board tonight, which is a site plan review. At thirty eight Franklin Street, map ID thirty one A O two three and we'll get to that soon. But prior to that, we open up the meeting to anyone for public comment who would like to make. Um remarks, give remarks at a planning board about other issues in the city. Um, that don't have to do with the application in front of us. You'll have time for that comment later on. So is there anyone here in council chambers or in zoom who would like to provide us with a comment? I don't see any texts.
I don't see any chats.
Okay, hearing none at this point, we'll move right into our application. Um, again, which is for a site plan review to add a second detached dwelling by Peter. Benkowski at thirty eight Franklin Street, map ID thirty one A dash O two three. Um, is the applicant here? We'd like to make a presentation.
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Come on up. You must be Mr. Benkowski.
I am. Thank you for having me. Nice to see you again. And um, I know the board has already reviewed the application, I believe, and seen the plans. So um. I don't know how in depth of a presentation would be helpful. But uh, we are planning and hoping to build. Should I get closer to the mic?
No, I was just gonna, do you have a thumb drive, an electronic presentation?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, so um, because for the public as well. Um, you do a screen share, so. I'm just gonna go here. Let me. Sorry. Oh, here it is.
Mine is good.
Okay, I'll just zoom in and then you can scroll down.
Great, thank you. So um. Yeah, this is a plan for a technically a second single family dwelling. As you know, um. We sort of intended this primarily as a two car garage with a studio space above it. In terms of our intended use, I'm sorry, this pulled up. There we go. See if I can zoom in for you guys. I might just let this do its thing.
Yeah, it's a little slow. I was trying to up bring the new computer in to update it and then they didn't. Switch the passwords on that computer. I can't get into it now.
Well, uh. In in short, as this is loading, um, uh, our property doesn't currently have a garage or any uh detached structure other than a small shed. And um, we were looking primarily to build a garage. And um, which will be taking up the space of that shed. The shed will be coming down, so we'll stay with one sort of exterior unit. Um, above that will be a finished studio space. Uh, which does have a full bathroom, which is why this falls into ADU territory is my understanding. Um. Uh, it will be twenty five feet by twenty eight feet. That's a, you can sort of see part of the structure there. Um, so the floor level will just be sort of regular garage space. Um, we're going to be extending the driveway back to meet the sort of. Uh, extra parking spot requirement and um, setting it back more or less at the same threshold as where the old shed started. Um, we've done that for a couple of reasons. Primarily was because um, we, we like our neighbors over at forty two Franklin. Um. And um, they're wonderful. Uh, and they have some windows that sort of face out into our yard. And um, you know, we've been in their space. They have a dining room there and they sort of have told us that they like to look out. It's a beautiful yard. Um, and um, so we've set it back sort of as far as reasonably possible so that we won't be blocking the windows. Um, the, the setback, uh, the side setback at the shortest point here you'll see is fifteen feet. Um, and of course, at the back, because of the sort of the way that the fence is aligned there towards the back, it'll be. Longer than fifteen feet, of course. Um, the second floor of the structure, as I mentioned, will be a finished studio space. Um, it'll have a, a small spot for a sink. Um, sort of. An unofficial kitchenette. I don't, we know, we're not planning on having a stove in there or anything, but. I don't know how to find it here. I'm sorry. I wasn't planning on using this. Um, but um, yeah, there's, there's the second floor will be a finished studio space. Well, it'll be primarily used as a writing studio. My, my, my husband is a writer. And and we're primarily just looking for a space for him to write quietly and not be jostled by our dogs barking uh, or for, for me walking in. Um, and the, the bathroom will be there to sort of help for long writing sessions. And you know, if we plan to ever stay overnight there. But um, in terms of our planned use, um, we're not planning on renting it out. It's not planned to be an Airbnb. Um, we're, we're pretty. Quiet folks. We're introverted. We like to be private, particularly with my husband being a writer. So um, we have no interest in renting to anybody else or sort of bringing more folks onto the property. Um, but in terms of any mitigating impacts, um, if we were to sell it and someone else were to use it that way. Um, you know, the driveway will be extended so that if there were more folks, their cars will be fully on the property. Of course. The garage will also have two more parking spots than we have now because we'll have the two indoor spots. We're not extending the sort of width of the driveway, the curb. The curb is going to stay exactly the same. Uh, we're not really doing anything dramatic beyond that. Um. Only other thing of note is right next to, right attached to garage is a second little area that we're going to have an indoor sauna just because. We really like saunas and we thought it would be wonderful to have while we're building that. Uh, it would be great to attach. Um, you know, we've worked with Maria Chow as an architect over in Anheuser and uh, have been in discussions with Tagno Construction. Um, they're both fully across everything. As far as we know, we're fully compliant with all the codes. Um, and you know, I, I did get the comments from a DPW earlier today. And um, they look great, nice and easy to follow. I did see that the. I didn't realize there were no sewer lines on the plans, but um, we do know where they're coming and the sewer lines are going to run. Uh, underneath the driveway and then we'll cut into the house about where our bulkhead is and connect to the main there. And the plumbing will do the same. Um, we'll of course have that on the plans for you guys. Um, as soon as it's available, but uh. As far as I know, we're, we're totally. Doing our best to be compliant. If there's any notes or anything, we'll of course change course.
Right. Great. Suggestions, questions from the board? Do you want to just?
Um, I do. They're all just about utility connections and not relevant to the planning board review and they, and they made a recommendation about. Um, to the applicant that they might want to consider an er- uh, simple erosion control plan. That's not required. It's just sort of heads up because you need to contain the sentiments on your site.
And the uh, it's going to be all electric back there for the small kitchenette and the bath.
Yeah, yeah, we're not putting any gas back there at all.
All right, and there's no trees coming down. It's unusual to have a project in front of us where we don't have to talk about large trees. That's great.
Yeah, yeah, there's some shrubbery. I mean, you, you saw there's nothing, nothing really of note.
Good. Well, then hearing none from the planning board, what we'll do now is perhaps um. Offer comments from the public. If there's anybody here in council chambers. Or at the Zoom who would like to comment on this project, please come forward. If you're on Zoom, you could raise your hand and we'll wait for your chat message.
Yeah, and you may just remind that chat could should be to you or me. And not gov dot zoom.
Uh huh, okay. Gov dot zoom does not respond.
Yeah, Zoom does not respond. I don't see any chats.
Don't see anything. We noticed that in the uh, it, some of the files that we got to look at, your butters spoke. To the project without any objections at all. Um, so nobody else is appearing here. Um. All right, is there a motion to close the, close the public hearing?
Sorry, question about not having a kitchen? There's no kitchen?
Well, we're, there is a spot, if I can show you where, you know, we're, we're not planning on having, we're planning on having a mini fridge under the counter and a sink.
It's not a kitchen. If there's no kitchen, it's not a house, is it?
Yes, so.
It's still a house?
Um, so we modified the code a couple of years ago, so if you have bathing facilities or and or kitchen, then we work. We count that as a unit.
And or.
And I mean, this then allows flexibility for the future. Yeah. And they're meeting the setbacks for as though we're a unit.
It's for the use they're talking about. They don't even really need to be here.
Right, it's just the bathroom, the full bath.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, and then we spoke to Jonathan Flag, who sort of explained that if we were to sell the house, then you know, the next buyer could potentially say. This is now our residence because it had qualified and I don't know that's why we're doing this, but.
Right. Oh, well, I'm moving closer to public hearing.
Um. Last question, just for me, any, any outrageous plans about exterior lighting for the unit?
No, um, we had, um, which by the way, we're, we're open to taking out, um, just under. The sort of eaves here on our um. Backyard side only and up here would be two tiny sort of spotlights going straight down.
Yep.
Um, nothing on the forty two Franklin Street side.
Okay, that's fine, as long as they're downcast, you know, that's within our regulated regulations, so. All right. Okay, motions were made to close the public hearing and seconded. All those in favor? All right, good, so. Board members, anything else?
The only one I recommended was the, that. Um, the building permit shall show compliance with the fossil fuel free heating system. But they, they're proposing that, so. Um, you don't need to put that in as a condition because that's what they presented.
But you can worry about traffic mitigation.
Um, so that you can um, discuss that. Um, this is about seven hundred square feet. So again, sort of like that ADU, a smaller than a standard ADU. Which would have been allowed by right till we put this in for that fossil fuel free unit. So. That's um, a good point that um. You can approve a waiver of traffic mitigation, particularly given that it's. Being used as a studio and it's seven hundred square feet, even if it were being used as a unit. So it's um, within your jurisdiction to wait that.
All right, and that is not a condition. That's just a um, a comment that we make.
Yeah.
And uh, in terms of the final plans, uh, selling the utility connections and all, that's not a condition either. That's just understood.
No, because they, they need to do that anyway before they get a building permit. You, you have to show water and sewer availability before you can apply for your building permit. And Department of Public Works reviews the request for water and sewer availability based on. Um, how the applicant's going to connect. And then they sign off on that. So that's just part of the building permit process.
Great. So we aren't listing any, we aren't listing any conditions at this point. We are just. The board discussed waiving the uh, traffic mitigation due to the small size of the project. In a minute, we'll attest to that, so. It's a pretty straightforward motion. If anybody has the. Particulars in front of them.
A move to approve the site planned at a second detached dwelling at thirty eight Franklin Street, map ID thirty one A dash zero two three, no conditions.
Great.
So satisfying.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, motions were made and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Alrighty, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
With your project.
Thank you for doing this work.
Okay. To our observer from UMass, I wish there was a little bit more meat and potatoes to this discussion, but. Sometimes applications are like this.
Well, it's like the planning process is perfect and there's never any tension.
Yeah.
Oh, never. Never.
Yeah. Good to know.
Good luck with that.
All right. Uh, what else do we have, Carol, in the minutes of October twelfth? Nope. How about uh, request to close out Emerson Way subdivision again?
Yes, so this time, so I'll go through the history and if you guys want me to pull up the plans, I'd be happy to do that.
Welcome to stay and hear this bureaucratic stuff, or you can also.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yes, okay. Bye bye.
Um, so how about if I just? Um, we've had you, some iterations of this board have reviewed. Um, a conversation about Emerson Way over the last couple of years for different reasons. Um, but so this app, this subdivision. Was first approved, I think in two thousand and three. Um, and uh, went through various phases of construction. They had a performance guarantee that's. Was changed out multiple times as they completed different phases. Um, and now they have um, completed all the work. Um, I'm going to just um, show you on Google Earth.
Thanks, Chris.
Um. Let's see here, okay. Just to refresh everybody's memory. Okay, there we are. So this loop is Emerson Way. It's a private street. So that's um, sort of makes a. Um. You know, it's a, there's a sort of different sign off and review by Department of Public Works. Um. This won't go then to street acceptance, as you know, because this came down, I guess that was the last time it came in front of you. So they're asked, they've um, completed their Asbilt plans, they've completed um, the certification from the utility companies. That that's all required as part of closing out the subdivision and the last, so what the ultimately, um. Then. They um, still have a, the bank, a tri-party agreement with the bank. So once you make um, you move to close this out, they can. Um, close their third party agreement, tri-party agreement with the bank and release those um, funds. So the homeowners association is fully up and running. Um. The last thing that we were waiting for was a certification that the, so typically require as part of the Asbilt, the. Two trees per lot are supposed to be planted on each. It within each subdivision, that usually goes on the Asbilt plan. They didn't include that on the Asbilt plan. We've got a certification from a landscaper who installed the trees, noting they put actually more than two trees on, on per lot. So um, the applicant is asking um, that documentation to be. Um, sufficient to show that they planted the trees. As opposed to going back, resur surveying every tree and putting it on a new Mylar. Um, which would be expensive. So. I, you know, I think the DPW, to the extent um, they signed up on the, you know, water. Connections because that's a big issue there that's connecting into the main, the water main on Burt's Pit. And um, I think they've pretty much come to the end. Finally finished after twenty years of building out that subdivision. It might be the longest one under construction. Well, state hospital is pretty close, but yeah.
Beaver Brook, I don't know if we finished with Beaver Brook. At least that's holding some money there.
No, we're done.
We're done. So um. There was also this, this issue of transferring kind of the uh. The affordable housing rights over to Burt's Pit and that development with um, Pioneer Habitat, but that's a separate. That's not linked at all to the homeowner.
Those are all built and occupied.
Yeah.
And then this weekend, actually Habitat's going to have an opening. Um. Uh, ribbon cutting, yeah, for the units that they are doing there at that, that, the. Burt's Meadow project across the way, but um, the developer, so this changed hands originally from Tofino to um. Uh, Rich Madowitz is now the, the um, controlling partner. And then he was the one that developed the required affordable units. At Burt's, but those are all complete.
All right. So this is a, a recommendation from the board or a motion and?
A motion and approval to close out the subdivision, which means we can release the performance guarantee and they can. Record.
And as I was saying, the project is done and we don't need the money to finish it.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, somebody want to make a motion to? Close out the Emerson Way subdivision?
I'll move that we close out the Emerson Way subdivision.
Second, thank you. Motion's were made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Good, twenty years later, all right? Yeah. That's right, we're still waiting at Hospital Hill for that one cul-de-sac that had some drainage issues that. Where I think that's the.
Subdivisions done, subdivisions are done up there. There's still a lot. Um, that's still two lots, I think.
They're holding some money on that one. That's there because.
That one's closed out. You mean Higgins Way, the one that the city had to, yeah. Yeah, you took that money and finished.
Okay, I'm sorry, the motions were made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I think we already did that.
Do that? Motion's were made and seconded. Oh my, I'm on top of our game today. Well done.
She's trying to stretch it out.
I'll be so happy to hear that.
Two hearings, okay. Um. And then we're just going to review our upcoming meetings.
That's the last thing I need. Yeah, so Monday is the um. Um, public forum for the historic preservation plan element that was, um, we hired a consultant to help us develop. So you're welcome to come to that. Be great.
Five thirty?
Five thirty, and it's here and also on June?
Yes.
What is an element? Why is it called an element? What does that mean?
Well, it's going to be absorbed into the sustainable North Hampton plan. So it's a piece, it's a chapter.
It's so confusing. You on the website, it's like. A link for element and it's like. It's such an odd word. I don't know.
H two O.
I found it eventually. It's riveting reading, let me tell you.
Yeah. Um, so it's, it's, it's hybrid. Um, so you can opt if you have, if you have a chance to come, that'd be great. It is ultimately. It's part of the plan. So the planning board is the body that adopted the plan. So it will be an amendment to the plan. Bring that in.
Do you, I mean. We have not been part of this process particularly. I mean, there's been a public process, but it's not, we haven't had like. Hearings about it.
Right.
At the planning board. I read it and was kind of scratching my head as to like, what is the? What's the upshot? Like, what, what does this change? Other than like.
Well, it's a policy document.
Right, so I wonder if like, we should have any conversation about like, what actually changes? In terms of what we do here, if there's anything, I don't know.
So no, because it's a plan, there's nothing that changes except, you know, so when someone applies for a special permit. Um, there's a criteria that needs to be reviewed that says, is this in conformance with? The adopted plan and goals and objectives of the city. So. Um, there might be components of the plan that then you would evaluate for a special permit project. But other than that, it's really just setting out policy objectives and um, action items to take that then might have. Subsequent, you know, ramifications on that work that the reviews that you do.
I guess that's the part that I'm, I'm curious about because the recommendations are like page, you know. Sixty of ninety or something like, they're in there deep. And when you get to them, you're. I was kind of scratching, I was not quite sure. I'm like, well, what if they did do all these things that they're recommending? Like, what would that change? I'm not quite sure. So I don't know, as a planning board, I don't know if we should have a strong opinion about that or say, oh, historic did it, you know, we should. Enjoy that, like, enjoy that they did it and we didn't have to do it. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the, the recommendations are just like the recommendations in the rest of the plan. So they're. Their recommendations for items that the city can work on to accomplish the goals that are. Established, so you'd probably want to look at. You know, the, the goals and policy section and um, I mean, and recommendations, but.
Do we have like an ability to like, ask them to take things out of it? I mean, we can, as a citizen, you can, but like, is there any formal?
Sure, because it's going to be ultimately, it's your document to adopt. So you can say, we don't think this is appropriate or explain this or what. That's why it's important because the consultants are going to, you know, review this with. In the public forum, so I think that might be.
Do we have a line item veto on parts of it or anything like that? Can we say like, we like this eighty percent of it or something?
Um. I mean, ultimately, you don't have to adopt it. But yeah, so you, you could say, I mean, I think that would be part of a public hearing process. So. It's, you have to make them, you have to um. Determine whether or not to adopt it after a public hearing. So that could be part of the conversation of public hearing. And that could be debated and you could hear what the public has to say about sort of those issues that you're concerned about and. Um, you know, does it conflict with another part of the plan? Is it um, should it be clear, should the language be clarified?
But my, my take is that this uh, very large public forum, not a public hearing, but a public forum. We'd want to give the uh, consultants a heads up that we have a concern about this or excited about that, so that. By the time it comes to the public hearing, they've kind of tweaked that or.
But that, what's coming up is not that. This is a presentation, like, this is, this is an official public hearing for the planning board?
No, it's not the official public hearing from the planning board. It's the public forum for the consultants and. Staff and the historic um, commission to host um, you know, a. A review and take comment on the draft document. And so then. After the comments come in for the um, from the forum. Historic commission and staff will work with the consultant to say, is there anything that needs to be adjusted or changed at, before the final document?
Sensible when the final was supposed to, when they want to finish it?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit, it's been a little bit delayed because we've asked for, you know, additional things, things just took time. Um.
But there was a first draft, which was somewhat different from this, I feel like, up. Um, some months or a year.
Yeah, we saw it years ago, I don't know.
It was a.
It was a presentation. It was sort of a presentation on what the, on the thing that, yeah, yeah. Um, so this is the time to really sort of gather um. You know, public input on the draft before it gets finalized. And then before then the planning board hosts. The formal public hearing that's required before actions taken on the plan.
I, I think what we're going to hear at the public forum is many, some residents feel like we're not doing enough to protect neighborhoods.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, so um, people will come out to really speak to it and hope that some of the. The, the plan has that kind of language in there that's going to.
That's exactly what I'm concerned about, you know.
Right, so we have to do our part and, and overlooking and kind of observing the whole city. To talk about the goals of the planning board and.
Will this change some of the criteria for special permit review? You know, there's always like that list of. Will that get updated once this is adopted in some way?
No, so what would have to happen would be if, in order to meet, let's say, if there's some goals in the. In that part of the plan that are inconsistent with um. With. The special permit criteria as it is, or maybe they need to be tweaked, then that's a regulatory change to help implement the plan. So. Any kind of review that the board does. The. Should be if 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 it. It makes sense, and I think some of the recommendations talk about sort of maybe ways that regulations could be addressed. But those things are their separate adoption process and go through a separate. Public hearing process before they're. They come into zoning, you know.
So we feel that portions of the plan are in conflict with. The current criteria, but we like that, then we would still adopt the plan and then recommend to the regulatory. Some committee that. Those things be changed now being conformance of.
We, so I think it's probably helpful to be a little more specific about. Recommendations are, so there's some recommendations to take significant areas and put them into. The kind of historical protections that we have in a couple of districts now. And there's some language in there about like recommending going, I think, a two-year instead of a one-year demolition delay.
Yeah.
I don't even know what the state law on that is, but whatever. So I don't know, I don't want to debate today like whether these are good or bad things. I just was wanted to just identify the dynamic if we. Adopt a plan. Later on. A planning board who might be faced with actually implementing pieces of this will say, well, that previous planning board thought this was so wise, we should all, we should do it. And I don't know how wise, I mean, I think we should think long and hard about how wise it is to take both big areas of the city and say they're all historic, so make it harder to redevelop and, you know.
I'm not sure that's the recommendation, although some people might interpret as being the recommendation.
Definitely some of the recommendations.
So I think there's certainly a lot of documentation that's being recommended to be done.
Right.
And that's a separate conversation. Documenting a neighborhood doesn't mean. That that's means it should be permanently protected as is.
No, it's the first step down that road, though.
It could be.
Could be, yeah.
But not necessarily, it could just be, okay, this is an area where the city is, where the city says from a sustainability perspective. We need to be adding new housing units to address our housing crisis.
Sure, sure.
Then. We should document. The. Structures in that neighborhood in the event that they are, that they do go up for requests for demolition. And then we've got that documentation. But it doesn't say that then you can't take that building down just because it's been. You know, recorded.
Sure.
But to your point, and yours, if some people might interpret it that way, you probably want to pay really close attention to what the language says. Because people are going to interpret it the what. With what they want it to say.
Yeah, I I haven't, I don't have a strong opinion about every single little address that they've listed in there. I just think it's, this is not value neutral, just, let's just put it that way. It's not say, oh, it's a cute house, let's save it, you know, or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of. Ways that this will get used, even if we don't have like an official protection on things, it it can get used. As saying, well, it was going down that path, you know.
Yeah.
I think we should be aware of how that gets used and and. Anyway, as long as, I think it sounds like we're going to have a process about it and that's great.
Yeah. And so all of those things, I think, are appropriate for Monday, for the public hearing, for, yeah.
And again, the initial conversation, I think, question was this. Historic preservation plan is part, it's an element, a component of our master plan?
Yeah.
And what are the other main elements?
There's transportation, open space.
Parks and rec, of course, that all under open space.
Open space and conservation. And.
Resiliency.
Climate resilience.
Resiliency.
I think CPC has a piece in there too, or at one point did.
So it's not, the CPC itself doesn't, I mean, there's. There's. You know, housing piece and there's recreation piece that, and then now this will be the historic.
They have a plan that takes those other things.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a separate thing, okay.
Okay, dog. So the master plan is a living, breathing document, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Blueprint for our city. That changes depending upon. All right. Well, good, I hope many of us can make it and it's a big document. I wish I wish I had it in hard copy so I could look at it, but. I guess I'll read it as you did, right, scrolling through? Yep.
Do it on an Apple Watch, that's the best format.
Yeah.
I can send it to paradise. Bill it to the city?
I didn't say that.
I so miss those big plans and all those documents. Oh, so, okay, any other comments? Well, there's a, there's another meeting coming up, so that's the historical preservation plan forum. And then we have a.
Then we have a meeting, a regular meeting November ninth, which is the next planning board meeting. There are two applications on that agenda. Then the following Monday, the thirteenth, will be the joint public hearing with legislative matters on the lighting.
The lighting ordinance, yes.
Been issued with the language of that is yet?
Yeah, it's.
It's out there.
Yeah, I can send it to you, it was on council agenda, so it's in the.
Yeah, if you could send that around.
Yeah. And then you're done for November. And then one meeting in December.
Because because of Thanksgiving, we skipped that second meeting in the month, one meeting in December, great. We're hoping to pull together a little sight view of some lighting examples around the city in the dark. If we can before the thirteenth. Hopefully, most of us are available to kind of go with John Frye, who has the light meter and a little bit more experience with that. But look at some spots that would be great for me. I know it'd be great when I look at the lighting plan. Especially to learn more about the color range, you know, things like that.
That's something we're going to schedule through email or something?
Yeah, yeah.
I need to get John's schedule and see when he's available to do that.
Great. Look it up, anything else come before the board? Anybody, Mr. Tasseron's out there? All right, is there a motion to close the? Adjourn? Seven forty-three. Motion is made and seconded to adjourn the planning board meeting at seven forty-three. All those in favor? Woo hoo.